We're starting a little bit late on Tuesday, April the ninth with our regular meeting of the Cedar Springs Plan Commission. So we'll call the meeting to order. Budget.
For the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The roll call. Um, Mr. Hold, we just found out is on his way. Penn, see one heard from him?
I tested him, no reply.
Um, is that Brozki?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Nixon? Oh.
Here.
Conley's here and of course, we also have Mr. Moore, city planner, and of course, our city manager and our city clerk here this evening. Um, we have some minutes to approve. Uh, we have, of course, the minutes from our regular meeting as you see on the agenda, but we also had the special meeting. Uh, the we have the regular meeting on March fifth, two twenty twenty four, and we had the special meeting with Seoul and Township. There's also minutes in there from, uh, March twenty sixth. So we would have to approve both of those or at least discuss approving them. Go from there. Have a motion for that or?
I'll make a motion to approve both of those drafts if that's acceptable.
Um, any discussion or any issues with either of those minutes? I first lost my computer. I think they looked good when I read them before. All right, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes? Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Second on that motion.
Yes. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Uh, next, we have our agenda, of course, on page one. It's a short package tonight. It's only one to fifteen, so I won't hopefully won't have to help people too much. Fine, thanks. Um, anything we need to add or look at on the agenda? I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of approving agenda? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Public comments. Um, there's, of course, no public in here. I can't see all the way over there. Is there any public on Zoom? Okay, um, then I feel relatively comfortable moving on from public comments. Uh, item seven, conflicts of interest and expert communication. Is there any of that that anyone on the planning commission needs to report? Right? I don't talk to anybody, so that's. Whether they have business in front of us or not, so there we go. And scheduled public hearings, we do have a public hearing today that I will open. Open a public hearing on an ordinance to amend, excuse me, uh, section thirty-two, five thirty-two pertaining to the basis. Pertaining to basis for determining front yard requirements of chapter thirty-two zoning of the cord code of ordinance of the city of Cedar Springs. I can't even read tonight. Once again, I see no public in the audience for public comments and still not on Zoom. With that, I will close the public hearing. Um, but open up discussion on that. Is there? Anything, uh, you'd like to let us know about that, Darla or Andy or whoever's working on that?
It's the exact same amendment that we discussed last month, so this was kind of the cleanup thing after we adjusted the sign. Section, there was some language in there, uh, related awnings that we felt would be best regulated elsewhere, so, um, this, I didn't put it. So, um, it is unchanged from the last meeting. I don't think you requested any adjustments and it's, it's a. A tax amendment, so, uh. Are no concerns or questions about it? You could just, uh, make a recommendation for.
So this is, uh, page ten. If you're looking at on the computer. I pretend it starts on ten, but the actual ordinance language starts at eleven. So we're looking for, um, a discussion or, or a motion to approve through recommend that we. Um, right, a motion to approve recommending this to the city council. I'll make a motion to recommend, um, amending section thirty-two dash five thirty-two. Um, to the, uh. City Council.
I'll support that motion.
Any discussion? This is your one chance to talk about awnings if you ever wanted to.
Really thrilling stuff.
An eclipse with a timeline, so. Hearing discussion, all in favor of, uh, of the motion, uh, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item nine, site plan reviews? None? And item ten, other business, uh, A, discussion on short-term rentals, uh, and what district should permit them? I see that there's a memo in here on page fourteen.
I just mentioned this briefly at, at a previous planning commission meeting, thought we would bring it back. One more time, just to get your final thoughts and then. Mr. Moore can do his magic and make an amendment to our. Ordinance, either to, to allow them if you would like or not, and no changes would need to be made.
Right, um, if, so this would kind of be, if you decide to move ahead with it, this would kind of be a two-part amendment. Um, one part would be pretty brief, which would be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and it would simply permit short-term rentals. Whatever districts you are appropriate, um, probably by right. And have that subject to a separate police power ordinance that. Much longer and that would contain all the regulations in terms of how, how many you're permitting. How long, like in here, I think. Any wide cap of five, short, short-term rental units. But otherwise, you could permit them, uh, districts you want, and you could set any other criteria on there that you feel are. You know, only the single-family dwelling unit, or they have to be separated by some minimum. Base, or you have to have additional party or anything else. Um, we could certainly provide you with an initial draft to, to react to because just sort of inventing. I would be a bit challenging. But you're looking at two separate documents to start and then we kind of work.
How do you define a short-term rental? Is that a week, a month, a day?
Pretty standard definition, I think it's, it coincides with what the building code defines as like a single family. Um, or like what a non-transient type of living arrangement is, it's, it's cut off, tends to be thirty days. Um, so we look at anything that, that's, it's rented for periods of time less than thirty days would be.
Okay.
And beyond that would just be, uh, rent. Rental and treated just like any other single. Father with. You think they're burnt for something longer than, than, than thirty days, just like right now, if someone lives in a place.
How, how would we know if somebody's only renting it? For a month? Or let's say the.
Why? To, to be designated as a short-term rental?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so, um, most of the short-term rentals are. Uh, cause you can go onto Airbnb or.
Mm-hmm.
Come up and figure it out pretty quickly. Um. So the way that the ordinance would work is that there would be like a registration process. We'd give them a form and say, if you want to short-term rent your property. Follow this form, there'd be a, an application fee of some kind that probably would be terribly expensive. Um, they would have them register and then that would be one of the five or however many, uh, to allow in the city. Back of that, and then.
What we can discuss.
Moving forward as whether or not there should be actions, for example, some communities would fire. That did every so often, whether it's something that the city would do or something where he would tell. An applicant, go get it inspected by a qualified, you know, house inspector and have them turn in their report plus. Kind of just the basic health, health, health and safety thing, just to make sure that they've got adequate. You know, smoke detectors and aggressive.
I think it, so we have a rental registration program now. I think these, these places would, would fall under that same rental registration process.
Yeah.
We contract with IMS to do that.
Okay.
They get a, if it's clean, three years certificate of occupancy, if it's meets all the code, they're good for three years.
So, yeah, that could absolutely work, um. Some communities require like an annual registration, so you could do it annually or, or you could do it longer. I mean, you, you could do a three-year registration. Um. That would be fine too. Actual problem would be that if somebody wanted to stop short-term renting. Not gonna know. Not necessarily, so if they do it for a year and then stop, they're still gonna take up a license for two more years while somebody else. You're waiting around for it, so we'd have to think, think through some of those issues a little bit, but. The principle is pretty straightforward in terms of. And then otherwise. I mean, other, 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 other communities have looked at, um. Additional regulations to deal with, like, you know, of stay, so in some communities, they don't. Person there every single night.
Mm-hmm.
Don't be allowed one registration. Someone comes in and signs up and they wanna stay, starting on Friday night. That's fine, they can stay there for one night or for six nights, but you don't have a new person in there until the following Friday night. Yeah. That family A is in there on Friday, you have family B is in there on Saturday, you have family C is in there on Sunday, you have. Have this constant. Hurrying stream of renters. That's not usually a problem because there's cleaning that has to happen in between each one. Um, but just with concern about not knowing who is living to, next to you on a day-to-day basis, or if there is a problem by the time you figure it out and time tag somebody. That are all, all, they're gone and there's nothing you can do about it and. And talk about all those kinds of things.
One thing, um, would there be any room in it for us to put something as in? If you allow, let's say. Rowdy people to rent your. You know, your rental. We can take it, we can take the application from you and then you will have it no more. If we can do something like that, because that's, I wanna make sure that we, we put like a basis for that down because I wanna make sure that we get. You know, good, solid rentals, because we don't wanna upset the people around, you know?
Yep, totally agree. What was that in the past? Trying to think of Tommy had, uh, there's one where we had a pretty, a pretty severe fine for. Um, short-term renting with, so like for, for basically listing it or having it occupied without the registration. Um, and then we also had something in there for. Um, if you had more than. Terrified documented actual. Then there was a process in there by which the city council could.
Hmm, okay.
In that instance, it would be revoked and then they would be ineligible to re-register for, I think we did a year. So, I mean, that, it's not a huge issue for the most part, um, because a lot of them are kind of self-policing and you wanna be a good renter and you wanna have.
Right.
Kind of, you know, highly rate, you wanna be a, kind of a VRBO guy, but you wanna be like the, you know, a super renter, whatever they call it, basically a very highly rated. Yeah, place, so, um, we don't have a ton of those issues, but there is a process in there or we put one in there that would.
Right, and, and we wouldn't, you wouldn't think that somebody who's renting these would want to go in after every person leaves. And rehab the inside of that house every time, so they're not, they, you would think they wouldn't wanna put up with it. Because building costs are astronomical.
Typically, from what I've seen. Kind of, it's not so much that they're like trashing the house, it's just that they're loud.
Yeah.
You know, it's rented out to a lot. Vacation. Here, they wanna go to the brewery, they. Have spring home a couple of growlers of. Whatever, and then they're getting a little loud around the fire, you know, it's just stuff like that, it's not like there's. You know, explosions or anything typically, it's, it's typically noise-related and there's. Had a bit too much of having a little. Typical.
Do we have any, uh? Short-term rentals in town at the moment?
I wanna say, so not a ton, but there were a couple both. On, I think they were both on the upper floors on Main Street, on second stories.
Well, the bakery was one of them. I don't remember what the other one was.
Is the one behind the brewery, uh, short-term, that new, brand-new house?
One that I remember.
But apparently not.
Looked lately, last I checked, there was just the two. Both here, but. There could be others that I don't, you know, that, there's, there are some where people could be short-term renting, not through one of those listing services and you just wouldn't.
Oh, sure.
But that, and I, I know that happens a lot in some of the, like, a, a lot of the really tourist-heavy lake shore communities. Um, there are places that have been short-term renting for. Always just been the same families go there every year, and so there's not really any marketing that they're doing. But with people starting it off, they have to list it somewhere, so typically if we look. Typically find.
Just a year or two ago, though, one of the multi-units that's over there behind Redbird, um, was, was leasing out. Um, and that unit was horrible. Um, there are multiple doors and, and, uh, I had a friend who came in from out of town and she felt really unsafe because, like I said, the multiple doors that were joining to that. That unit and, uh, it was just a strange layout and like weird stuff like, you know, the, um, water heater was. Kinda in the kitchen area and it, it was just a, a very odd. Thing, so.
I know a lot of those places have a self-policing policy. I only use Airbnb and VRBO when I travel. And I've probably rented like eight or nine in the last twelve months. And there's an anti-partying policy that you can actually kick off those, using those apps if you party, so. Again, it's self-policing because I think they don't want that app to be known as the party app or whatever like that. Now there's a big push for Airbnb recently like that, and the last three I rented, I had to make a note that I would not have. A party there, uh, before I was able to get there, there was like distinct things you had to like check before I could confirm my rental.
Right now, I just looked it up on Airbnb.
Ah.
And, and I find the interesting thing too, I get a note from my mortgage company about what my house would be worth if it was a short-term rental and it's not even paying my mortgage. For the, for the, the month if I rent it out. There's like, uh, two months it would pay it, but it was like, I kinda laughed when I saw it, thinking about this conversation that we had last November and it's.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if you'd make money renting a big house, but like a small place, like the ones downtown. Maybe they look good if, because the house, most of the income is off of the, probably the main floor, right? Whenever business is down there.
Yes. One hundred, so one, one of them is a hundred and twenty a night, one of them is a hundred a night, one of them is.
Here in town.
One sixty-nine a night for.
Just sixty, sixty, oh, sixty, yeah.
It's like, wow.
Um, but yeah, I mean, I think you're right, it, it varies wildly from, from place to place. I mean, there are some. That, we look at and they're. The pattern, excuse me, on. Whether anything and how big it is and how much. Effort they're putting with, in a lot of cases, they, they, they build them with the intention of, of sure. Yeah. I think that's, maybe you have less of a tourist draw here, so it's.
My, my in-laws live in Estes Park and they have an Airbnb, but their, um, city ordinance is that the owner has to live on the property.
Yeah, uh.
Difficult.
That, here too, um, there are some places where the short-term rental is just a room, it's not, well, I could see the entire house.
Ah.
Typically, you've. For rent, want, you know, whole.
Kitchen.
The entire house, the kitchen, fridge, yard, garage, whatever. But yeah, you could certainly require, um. Activacy and what, most ordinances also have is language in there that. Requires that if the, if the owner doesn't live nearby, then they have to designate a local agent who's. Owner of the place could be in, you know. But you gotta have somebody within. If there's an issue. He needed something, they would just. Gent and they would. You typically have, have something here where you'd have a responsible local. By, so if there's complaint, if there's an emergency, if the. Furnace goes out or something like that, you've got someone immediate. For seven. Phone number registered with the city.
That would be a good idea.
We looked at what the rules are that VRBO and Airbnb has for the renters that are renting out, right?
Yeah, um.
Landies, I guess, I don't know.
The companies have like a typical rental policy and in my experience, um, a lot of the people who are gonna be offering these units for. For renting are gonna have rules that are probably gonna be a lot more strict than what this is. Ordinance is gonna be pretty accommodating for the most part. Just in terms of. Number of, number of beds and people and, and things like that, a lot of the factors. That depends, but the people offering, or target to be pretty fussy, they're gonna have. Penalties which could.
I'm just wondering if there's a review of ordinances, local ordinances in there, in that, you know, making sure that we're not too vague, right? But also making sure that we're not too specific if they've already got a rule for something. That's why I'm just making sure that we got a clever blend of both of those would probably be important as we build this together, in my mind.
Yeah, we always have something in here that requires them to post to the city's rule. Okay, if, if the, if the landlord has, has their own rules, great, you know, have at it, you don't have to, I suppose. At minimum, you have to have the city's rules there, uh, be. mounted on the wall or someplace where people. Along with emergency phone numbers and. Hard to get out, you know, call, you know. Call or to the police department or something like that.
Anything else? So.
There, I think, um, for our purposes, so is there a, I guess, question, is there a consensus at all about? You want to allow them at all? And then two, if you do, how many and in what zoning districts, I think. Initial questions that.
I'm fine with allowing them, but I do think we need to think about where, and I, I guess I don't care where they're allowed. Um, because if somebody wants to rent out their place, as long as we have rules in place, I think is the important one, right? As I, I would say, every single place I've rented has been different. I was just in Chicago this weekend, I had a really tiny place, but it was nice, I mean, the landlord lived upstairs. Our front door didn't work when we first got there, so they came down and fixed that right off the bat. But, you know, some places I've been where they've been, you know, it's been twenty, twenty-five minute wait if something went wrong. No, but I, I just wanna make sure we have clear rules that coincide with what Airbnb VRBO has, but also something that makes sure that we have. A high standard of quality with what is being rented out in our town. I think that's the one thing we've worked on is making sure that we have a, a high-quality standard of what we're doing and improving our community.
So, uh, we have one vote for so far, how is anyone else? First, because that's the first thing we need to establish is if we're gonna move forward with it, otherwise, if, if, if there's only one vote to do it. And everyone else says no, then there's no point in not putting work into it.
I'm not for it, as long as, like I said, there's, there's the ability to, um, take that, um, registration if there's a, an issue and, like I said, if there's some sort of. Regulation as far as like the quality of what is being leased out. Uh, but I would put a cap on it because, like I said, we're having a problem with housing in the area anyways, so. That's something to be mindful of, that, that short-term might be, you know.
Right.
Taken away from, you know, cause like, uh, uh, Holland, I know that they, you know, obviously they're right by the lake and everything else, they, they actually. Completely nixed it all out, it's all these people who had invested money along the lakeshore to, you know, have families be able to come in or. You know, whatnot, they, they took that all away, and so there's not that option, and that doesn't make sense, because.
Get shut down in court. So that they're allowed to do.
Oh, are they allowed now?
Yep.
But it's.
I remember from this realtor over there, it's the only reason I know that.
But, I mean, that's kind of a, that, that's a destination where you, you know, really want to go, where for us, it's like red plant all time. You know what I mean? So, um, again, and with our limited amount of housing for regular occupancy, then I don't wanna just. Give them free range of the whole, you know. Housing market, so.
Yeah, I think limiting the number is smart, yes.
And I, I tend to agree, but when you amalgamate what Matt just told us about his mortgage. And the fact that we are not a great tourist Mecca, other than for some very select times, if a person. Wants to. Rent out their, their, um, a, a primary house that then sits vacant, most of the time, they're gonna lose money. Whereas, um, if it's more of, I have this space, as long as we can make sure that that space is actually livable. Which is where I'm thinking about those places, most apartments downtown, I could see where that. Those might be acceptable for a short period of time, but maybe not the most desirable long-term residences. Well, and the ones downtown, these aren't gonna be, uh. Um. Wheelchair accessible, right? You're not gonna be able to do that with, because they're upstairs, so disabled, you're not gonna be able to do that. So, question. Is asking for every year that the property be looked at? Is that to make sure that it is up to code? Is that on? Is that too much?
It's a rule for long-term rental. Wouldn't it be the same?
Three years right now.
If, if they fail an inspection, it, it comes every year. Yes. It's, they can get a three-year occupancy.
My thought is rental's a rental, right? If they pass it, they pass it, it's the same concept of renting out if it's a week or a year. In my mind, unless you've seen something else in other cities that we're not missing totally.
So the only other one that we've done that had, so they don't all have inspection requirements anyways. Um, the last one that we did that had an inspection requirement, I don't think it was every year, I think.
Okay, all right.
Registration was every year, every, and it was just every calendar year, so December thirty-first, everyone, the short-term rental things expire and. We're typically pretty proactive about it because in. December, January, they're filling up for June, July, August, the fall, summer,春天. But we could see that here, if there are, are, you know, peak times where we think that there is. Of some additional people here, people might start looking quite. So, yeah, we, I mean, we can, we can put something in there for now that kind of mirrors what the long-term rental inspection program is or just refers to it, but you can. Depart from that if you want to, but I kinda like the approach of doing it every three. If there's a complaint or if there's a failure or a problem, then it triggers a more frequent inspection.
Okay, alright. I like that, okay. I just wanna make sure that. I don't know, to to me, if you have rental property, it seems like that's taken care of, but if somebody has just a quick fly-by-night rental property. Then they're kinda like, eh, whatever, you know? Don't really, you know, I'm not really gonna take care of it too much. Got too many people coming in and out of it too quick and then it kind of, I just wanna make sure. Kid was held. Me. Hope we're getting trouble. But yeah, I think I think the B two, uh, would be a perfect place to start.
Five, maximum five, B two, if it goes well for a couple of years, we can.
Yeah.
Consider other areas if landlords request, you know, hey, I have a rental in the R one over here, can that be considered as a short, you know?
Now, three out of the four that we have in the city would be.
That one buried by the white pine trail.
Yeah, the White House, somebody told me that wasn't, but it is.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it's called the White House of Cedar Springs. So that is offered as a short-term rental.
Nice second place, though.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It's the one I would rent.
I mean, that could be.
Now the beds look nice, yeah.
Somewhere else they want someplace that's close to the trail and they wanna go for a, maybe they want. Main city, yeah? Or down in, down down in the ballpark.
Maybe that looks like a place where people that wanna ride would hang out with the, uh, at least from the pictures I'm looking at with the. Edronic chairs out front and everything, yeah.
Big deck out back.
Yeah. Yep, so yeah, we could do, um, again, we can start with just the two. The council can always amend that, that regulatory, well, actually, no, I take that back. We'd have to amend the zoning part of it to it's.
That's cool.
That would be a zoning amendment that would permit it in the. Want to expand that, we'd have to do it through zoning.
Good.
Senate generally long process, my couple months to write up an amendment and get it.
I'm, I don't think I'm pro living. Where we.
Yeah.
Expand it.
Yes.
I don't know if I could support having the short-term rentals in the R one, there's enough rentals in the R one as it is.
Fine, I think that can be done, but that's. Totally get it, a a lot of communities are really hesitant to allow very many. Their neighborhood districts, and I know like in, uh, up Haven, we do a lot of work there and they've been very eager. Block taken up with nothing but. Parking is a big problem.
Yeah, I like it though, I like the B two and because, I mean. If you're gonna have a short-term rental, you wanna be close to everything, you don't wanna be getting in the car like at the hotel and having to drive. You're right here on Main Street, there's everything right there.
That's if you're coming in town to be in Cedar Springs, I mean, if.
Yeah, right.
There's something big in Grand Rapids, everything else is booked up, you might have to drive north, right?
That's, that's what, yeah. I very rarely stay right in the place I'm going to.
Exactly.
When I was in Chicago last week and we stayed a little bit off of downtown, cause we couldn't find any place downtown.
Go, I don't have a place I can afford.
Yeah, well, that's why I said I couldn't find anything under a grand.
In Miami over the, over break, that was, I was not gonna be right down on the beach.
Yeah.
I have two yeses. You have more yeses?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with the pilot.
We have enough.
Yeah.
System before.
With the pilot program, of course, I'm ready.
Is there a way if we include that White House one in there? I mean, it's just, it's the nicest looking one in town.
Yeah.
How far is that from the beach?
It's not that far away, it's like a block off of the B two.
It's right behind, uh, New Park and Lot, Second and Maple.
That's what I mean.
No, it's not behind it, it's right next to it.
Right behind the brewery.
Special land use.
Like, I, I, what's the, what's the, what is the boundary? Well, I guess it would have to be.
Yeah, I know, well, I'm just saying, if we're gonna create rules, I get it, but it is the nicest one in the entire town. I don't know if there's a way to.
I mean, I don't know off the top of my head whether.
I can't remember.
Creative way to allow.
Okay.
Whether we say it's in B two and in this district, but only if you're within a certain.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, if it's close to the trail, that makes sense to me if you got bike, people that are tightless.
Kind of a thing going on too.
If if someone built a house in in. From scratch with the intent to rent it and never contacted the city about using that as a short-term rental.
Yeah.
They took some of their own.
Yeah.
Some of their own risks on that.
Yeah, you're not a smart business.
And I mean, they could always sell it, they could always sell it as the residence it was pretending to be.
Yeah, yeah.
That surprises me, I I talked with that guy quite a bit, um. Permit, I believe, fence or something. And he's a professor at, um. Fair State University.
White House one?
Yeah. Be happy to live in Cedar Springs and. I'm like, well, that's quite a drive. He said, well, I don't, I don't go to Big Rapids every day, only, you know, like two, two days a week or whatever and. Well, I'm surprised, maybe that changed hands and now it's, you know, I don't know.
Hey, we had, we had somebody in, um. Who's in Lowell and he, for four months out of the year, his work took him to like San Diego or something.
Yeah.
Four months, I'd rather have somebody.
Yep.
Give care of it, can make some money on the side, I'm not using it, so he would, he would only short-term rent it for like three months out of the year, four months out of the year, when he was. Otherwise, that was a house.
Hmm.
So if he didn't have somebody.
They rent their place in Florida.
Yeah.
Or Arizona, and then when they're up here, when they're down there, they're renting their place up here.
Yeah.
Come back home.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it would still have to be registered as a show, yeah.
If how that place is the availability that they put on. I mean, I, I'm a VRBO and you can look at the calendar when it's available to rent, what's not available to rent. But I'm not sure how Airbnb does it, but anyway, I don't wanna get into anyone's very specific.
The White House one, there's only three reviews and the rest have forty, so. I'm gonna imagine that's a fairly recent one that's been put up there.
Sale once, so maybe somebody bought it and then.
That one too.
Whoever Clayton is, Clayton's place is usually booked. I should tell you the owner's name.
And we we can start with the. Who and then, I mean, obviously you'll have some time if you want to expand the scope of this too, so I'll include this and others.
There's nothing in VRBO.
That's fine, and you can write the cap however you want, you could say, well, uh, not more than. Five in the B two and not more than. Three total anywhere in the R two or R one district, so you don't have to worry about like huge concentrations of them.
Oh.
Are are different ways that we can kind of limit. Possible either clustering of the water or just proliferation. Might be able to use some of those tools to allow. One or two of these outside of the downtown. But not. Bowing them.
I don't perceive as having a glutton of VRBOs and Airbnbs here, not anytime soon at least.
Contractors that work for our different companies around here will come in for a month or two sometimes.
The spot just off of downtown Grand Rapids, it's like, uh. I think Airbnb owns it and they have, it's like a basically a small apartment place, it's right next to the hospital that they use for hospital people to come in. Now, it is right, I mean, it's right next to the hospital, yeah, and a very old building.
Makes sense.
So if you have what you need to move forward from us thus far and everyone feel like their voice has been heard, I'd love to move on to the next thing, so we can go home at some point.
Took it off of last week and forgot to add it on to this week.
So the next thing, uh, was item B, uh, master plan update and update from Mr. Moore.
So I'll actually be pretty brief with this, I don't have a major update for you at this point. Um, so we're just kind of kicking off the process, we're waiting to hear on the grant that was submitted to, would help offset the costs of this, um, our first step. Is a lot of research, which we're working on right now, we don't have any. Data and stuff to present to you at at this point, we should have that for the next meeting. Start working on a survey instrument. So the first kind of couple of months of this take a bit of time just cause there's a lot of. Office on our end, but will be. Patient and documents and maps and everything. Next month, we should, we should have a bunch of it and then we'll have more. Um, and then we'll have to, as as we talked about that and we'll kinda see what the event looks like, but we'll also need to go through. Us. Buy a draft of that to go through and all the questions. Any necessary modifications to those. This will be a recurring agenda item for the next.
Okay, thank you. Um, open discussion for issues, not on the agenda, we have our correspondence, of course, the first thing in correspondence is the calendar and I wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone that. We're off cycle again next month, so second Tuesday for that month, I think it's the fourteenth, I don't, I'm not looking at it, but.
Yep.
Um, and then upcoming projects, is there something?
We we had a couple listed there last year, we we do have some projects upcoming, uh, Dean's Landscaping. Um, they have the paperwork, they're busy, I said, just get it to us as soon as you can, further site plan, condominium. Um. Still waiting on, I have on my calendar at the end of this month to contact. Um, the owner of the previous, um, was at the Gun Tavern downtown here, we've seen preliminary plans, it looks awesome. She said May of twenty twenty-four, which is next month, so I'll just kinda give her a little email reminder, would like to see that moving forward. And Vanderhyde Ford, the Dave that was working on their parking lot expansion, he is no longer with Vanderhyde. So somebody else is now trying to pick up the pieces, they've never done planning commission stuff before, so. So if you need help, we're here to help you.
Okay.
And.
Carla, were you talking about the Roundup Tavern? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, did I say Gun Tavern?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Roundup, yeah.
Eight.
Yep.
Okay, then, uh, staff comments, the city manager?
I just had a couple of things to share, um, so we do have a a vacancy on our planning commission. If you know of anybody, um, I've sent out a couple of emails, we've posted it on the website, Facebook. Um, we are accepting applications for planning commission, we do have two city council seats, um, those petitions are due by April twenty-third. Twenty-four, twenty-third, four P M. The the election isn't until November, but paperwork's due in April.
One. Seat for those seats.
Seats open, only one set of papers has been taken out, but none, none has been turned back in. If you know of anybody. Um, a couple of the things I wanted to mention, the seventeen North Main Street Pocket Park, which will have a name shortly, hopefully. Bids are due April second, we only received two bids, one from a landscape company, one from an electrician. Uh, with no general contractor bidding on the project, we had to reject all bids, it is back out for bids. Um, we, the engineer contract contacted, um, several people got the full set of plans. But just didn't turn in bids, so we reached back out to them, you know. Was there a problem? Why didn't you submit a bid? Uh, spring break threw a wrench and a lot of, either their staff was on spring break, so they couldn't submit a bid or. They were reaching, waiting for subcontractors to submit their information, to put the packet together, they were on spring break, so. Bad timing, um, so it's back out to bid, new, um. New bids are due April twenty-sixth, I think it is, later this month, so they got three more weeks to work on it. Um, hopefully a general contractor will put a bid in on it, cause that, we really need a general contractor for this kind of project. Just to keep the flow of the order of what needs to be done there. Um, and then it'll, hopefully, city council can award that to the general contractor in May. So it's still plans to be a twenty twenty-four project. Instead of, we had a stip- stipulation in there saying we wanted them to begin on or around May first. That has been changed to, it needs to be substantially completed by September thirtieth.
Alright.
Um, the only other thing, did anybody have any questions on the arsenic well three letters that went out? Um. It happens, there's arsenic in groundwater, uh, we immediately took the well offline, in fact, today it was, um, the. The well itself was plugged with hole plug. For be in service again, uh, well six, that's gonna replace well three, uh, the well is actually in, um, they started on the well house. Um, on top of ground, uh, this week, that should be online with the rest of the system, uh, later this summer or early fall.
Could say that one of the advantages of being on the city water is someone's checking constantly to see, because anyone could have pulled the contaminant in their well. And I don't know about you, but the wells I've had, I didn't check them monthly. Uh, or decadely, so, yeah, so you wouldn't even have known it was there. So, uh, that is all, that all for you?
I got so interested in the water discussion, we had our water tested, I don't know what the results are yet. Oh, the, uh, condos, do we know the? The White Creek Flats or whatever it is, any?
Emailed them about a month ago and they were waiting on Eagle permitting. Oh. Soon as they get it, they're, they wanna break ground.
Sewer construction that's on White Creek right now, have anything to do with that or is that?
That was storm sewer for University of Michigan, they had a parking lot expansion that we approved last year. And this was the storm water that had to be routed all the way around, they're, they own all of that property. And there's a pond closer to one thirty-one that they.
Sounds.
Did too.
About that, it's been so long.
Our phone rang last Monday, what's going on in White Creek? I'm like, I don't know what's going on in White Creek, so I got in my car and drove over there.
Now, everybody's been asking me and I'm all like, well, I'll try to find out.
Staff comments for the city clerk? Um. So I guess, oh, planning commission members. Did I jump over Mr. Moore?
Yes.
No, he comes left.
Does he?
Item thirteen, we're on eleven seat.
Sorry. He's holding up, he's giving more time to finish his soliloquy, soliloquy here. Get his script.
Uh, planning commission members, any comments? I I wanted to take the opportunity, I didn't feel comfortable bringing it up, uh, at the Solon meeting. Because it was far too fresh, far too raw, but I wanted to point out. That empty seat over there. Um, I don't have much else to say other than that, because it'll get a little hard, but. Yeah. I just wonder. Recognize. Uh, Mr. Hall, so, okay, moving on. Uh. Report of the city council representative.
That got me all choked up. Um, the Sol meeting I thought was fantastic. I'm glad we did it and I hope we do it on a more regular basis because we are neighbors and. We have to support each other in every way we can. And, um, I was glad, you did a marvelous job, Clint, by the way, I thought. Steerness. But it was, you did a good job of jabbering, I gotta say that, so anyways. I was glad to be a part of that and hope we do that more often and, um. On we go, thank you everybody for being here.
And, uh, planning consultant.
I don't really have any reports, so all that waiting for nothing.
Past eight, so I missed it by a minute and a half, so. We're adjourned.